Good evening. I am Jane Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization structured at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit questions for a future forum, visit our Facebook page, "League of Women Voters Rochester, Minnesota," for information and deadlines for submission. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not answered tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for public office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage all citizens, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for Olmsted County Board of Commissioners, District Number Seven. Candidates for this seat are Mark Tyne and Wale Allebade. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. It isn't necessary to use the entire time for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is LWV Rochester member Dee Voldahl. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brima-John, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swissel. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from the Chamber of Commerce. Candidate Tyne will begin with his two-minute opening statement.
Hi, I'm Mark Tyne, and I'm your Olmsted County Commissioner for District Seven. District Seven consists of New Haven, Orinoco, Farmington, Cascade, Haverhill, and Marion Townships, parts of the city of Pine Island, the city of Orinoco, and the north and east fringes of Rochester. District Seven is arguably the most diverse district in Olmsted County in various perspectives, with farmers, small-town residents, large-lot suburban residents, residents, and city residents. I was born and raised in Rochester. After high school, I graduated from the University of First City of St. Thomas with a business degree and a minor in economics. I then came to work for our family business, Tyne Well Company, which was started in 1893, and I'm a fourth-generation water well driller. In 1992, I married Jenny Jacobson from Chatfield, and would like to take this opportunity to thank her for putting up with me for all these years. Together, we have raised Katie, who is getting married to her fiancee, Chris, in two weeks, and is a speech pathologist for Anoka Henepin; Abby, who married her husband Paul last year and is special education teacher for Anoka Henepin School District; and Peyton, our youngest, who is a senior at Michigan State and plans to go to law school. They make us very proud. In 1992, we bought some rural acreage in Orinoco Township, moved into a 1970 14-by-70 trailer house, raised our three kids, worked hard, saved our money, and eventually built a house, the same house that we live in right now. I then became a supervisor and chairman of the Orinoco Township Board, a position I held for 17 years until I ran for county commissioner in 2016. In addition to running my business and being a county commissioner, I'm a 10th-grade head football coach for Pine Island High School and a varsity assistant. Thank you for hosting this debate.
Thank you, and now the opening statement from candidate Allebade.
My name is Wale Allebade. Coming to America at the age of 21, my journey was not an easy one. I had no access to financial aid or student loans and paid my way through college. This involved a lot of sacrifice, hard work, and persistence, and those experiences helped shape some of my values as a professional, husband, father, and community leader. I earned my bachelor's degree in information systems from the University of Wisconsin-Lacrosse, master's in business administration with ethical leadership emphasis from Vitturba University, and have numerous industry certifications. I also have small-business experience, and I'm happily married for 14 years to Adria Allebade and have three children. I currently serve as Director of Strategy Management Services at Mayo Clinic, Vice President of Rochester NWA CP, President of the Lacrosse Product Mandate Chapter, Olmsted County Human Rights Commissioner, distinguished alumni, and a TED Talk speaker. And basically, all of this has prepared me for greater leadership within our community. My motivation always comes down to service. Where can I put my skills for the betterment for everyone? I believe that we are best when we are one community working together, and my goal is to make sure that Olmsted County is a great place for everyone to live and work, and that we put our tax dollars to work in ways that fosters trust in the community. My campaign is also a positive one, and my priorities for Olmsted County are increased access to public health services and social services programs, COVID economic recovery, affordable housing, transparency and community engagement in government, diversity, equity, and inclusion, ethics, and accountability. And I bring a diverse and fresh perspective with strong leadership, strategic, and business experience that will help us respond to growth and change in this new economy. We have so much potential in Olmsted County. We can be more creative, supportive, responsible, transparent at all levels of government, and I ask for your vote. Learn more about me at walemn.com. Thank you.
Thank you. We now turn to questions from all of the participants tonight, and the first question comes from the public, and it goes first to candidate Allebade. Has the pandemic changed your view of the role of the county's public health department?
Well, the pandemic is not really, but I guess, actually, it has. When we look at, you know, where we are in terms of COVID, we have a lot of health disparities and in terms of also just the critical services that a county provides. You know, without county services, you know, we have a lot of people that are going to be at risk, so the county provides a lot of really critical services. Now, I think we need to have a lot more increased access to those critical services in terms of, you know, contract tracing, COVID testing, so county provides a lot of services, and it's basically made it more important for us to ensure that it reaches people.
Thank you. Candidate Tyne, same question, and I can repeat it if you wish.
I'm fine. I think I understand the gist of it. So, I would say that the COVID pandemic has enforced how smart it was of Olmsted County decades ago to start a public health department within the county because our public health department is the envy of the whole state. I don't believe there's another county in this state that is better served by its health department. I don't think the state as a whole is served as well by the MDH as we are in Olmsted County by our public health department, and this makes us look good that we had a pandemic and we were prepared and have very smart and able people to help us. So, I'm happy that decades ago, we made a great decision.
Thank you. The next question is from League of Women Voters. It goes first to candidate Tyne. How do you plan to involve your constituents, youth, and neighborhood associations to inform your decision-making?
Well, I'm active on social media with both my personal page and my county commissioner page, and I'm always engaging the public through that forum, where I'll post topics or I'll post agendas of upcoming meetings and entertain discussion as long as it's civil. And after the meeting, I post minutes, and I post pictures of slides so that we can have more ongoing discussions of it, and I think social media works very well for that. In addition to that, I attend Township Officers Association meetings, and I publish my cellphone on my website and on the county website, and I'm willing to answer any phone calls.
Same question to candidate Allebade.
Can you repeat it, please?
I certainly can. How do you plan to involve your constituents, youth, and neighborhood associations to inform your decision-making?
Well, it's really easy. Social media is obviously one aspect, but I think more importantly, it's also involves a lot more work, but really going out and making yourself really accessible, having face-to-face conversations. So, if I'm fortunate to be the county commissioner for District Seven, you know, I'm going to make sure that our community and our constituents have easy access to me, and that could be quarterly touchpoints or even monthly touchpoints where we actually have conversations about decisions that we're making. I'm also going to make sure that people can easily get access to me through my phone number and really just talking to parents and family members. You know, I've already started doing that, talking to people in Rochester, Orinoco, and other places. So, basically, it's really key, and I'm committed to doing that.
Thank you. The next question comes from Randy Peterson of the Rochester Post Bulletin.
The county faces several state mandates with the likelihood of decreased funding. At the same time, the decision has been made to avoid an increase in the county's property tax levy. What budget items do you see as eligible for cuts in the coming year?
That's to me first, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Last speaker.
I'm sorry. What budget? I don't know that I want to specify specific budget items. We're delaying certain projects that aren't considered essential. The expansion, future expansion of Grand Park is likely delayed. Oxbow is delayed a year, so we have a soft hiring freeze where we're trying to get by with less. So, we're just tightening our belt, and we're fortunate in that we've been a very prudent county financially through the years, so we have healthy reserves, and we're one of only the top 3% of counties in the country that have a AAA bond rating, so we're able to bond items and pay for them long-term if they fit that category.
Candidate Allebade.
Question again.
Sure. The county faces several state mandates with the likelihood of decreased funding. At the same time, the decision has been made to avoid an increase in the county's property tax levy. What budget items do you see as eligible for cuts in the coming year?
Well, in terms of specific budget items, I'm not sure, but what I know that we can do is be more creative in terms of ways that we can actually increase more revenue. So, when we look at business development, you know, do we have the ability to attract more businesses to Olmsted County? You know, and with attracting more businesses, you know, that is beneficial to folks in the rural areas, is beneficial to Rochester. So, that'd be one way where we can actually increase more revenues, and I think it's really critical to make sure that our critical services like, you know, public increased access to public health services are really focused on, and obviously, our COVID economic recovery. So, there are opportunities that we can collaborate with businesses. Now, in terms of priorities, I think it's also really important for us to really specify which priorities that we really want to focus on. You know, obviously, we're in a COVID world. We need to take care of COVID, but we can't forget people, you know? We have to put people first, and we also have to make sure that we have strong diversity, equity, and inclusion because that's an opportunity for us to lift everybody up, you know? And in terms of also making sure that we have good community engagement, and that's going to make sure that the public can actually trust the decisions we make. So, those are the things that I would focus on.
Thank you. The next question goes first to candidate Allebade, and it is from Sam Gill of the Rochester Chamber of Commerce.
How would you evaluate the current economic relief measures deployed by the county to assist local small businesses and nonprofits? As a commissioner, what steps will you take to continue to support local businesses? What additional tactics can the county employ to strengthen the local economy and provide additional relief?
So, the county has done a decent job in terms of the funds they've given to, you know, businesses, you know? So, there's, I believe, it's $5 million, you know? And that doesn't really cut it, and it's a hard decision to make. But our businesses are struggling, our families are struggling, people are struggling, and so we need to be more creative, and I think by leveraging, you know, our relationships with existing businesses in Olmsted County, looking for additional ways where we can get increased funding. So, I think, but definitely, the $5 million is not going to cut it for folks, and so we just need to be more creative, and I'm committed to exploring that.
Candidate Tyne.
I think we've gone around the right measure. So, we took our CARES Act funding, and we dedicated $4 million to businesses that are based in Olmsted County and $1 million to the nonprofits, and we had ready to take care of the process of determining what businesses qualify for that $4 million in direct relief grants, not loans, and Rochester Foundation took care of determining who would qualify for the $1 million in nonprofit relief. Of that, we have about $800,000 left after this first round, and now we're going to start a second round of relief directly for the small businesses where we loosen the restrictions or loosen the requirements to try to hit those who didn't quite make the cut on the first round. So, we're very concerned about our small businesses in Olmsted County, and in addition to that, we took all our property taxes, commercial and personal property taxes, and delayed the date until December 15th this year to try to give people time.
Thank you for your answers. The next question comes from the general public, and it goes first to candidate Tyne. To meet residents' needs and have efficient public services, Olmsted County needs to coordinate with the city of Rochester and other local governments as well on many issues. What will you do to improve the relationship between the county and city of Rochester and the townships?
That's a great question, and that's very important to me. I try to develop personal connections with all the city council and the mayor of Rochester. I've had most of them over to my house for dinner. I am friends with the mayor of Orinoco, the mayor of Pine Island. As a former township supervisor for 17 years, I know most of the local township supervisors, most of them by name, so I call these people, I talk over issues, and I make sure that we're all working in one direction and we're not working against each other, and also we're not duplicating services because that's not a very efficient way to serve our citizens.
Candidate Allebade.
Yeah, so my approach is going to be similar. I am a very collaborative person, and I think it's really key for us to ensure that, you know, our county and city work together. You know, I mean, you take issues like affordable housing, that's not an issue that a county can solve alone. You know, it's not an issue that a city can solve alone, you know? Everybody needs to be hands-deep. So, it's really crucial to make sure that we actually work collaboratively with our, you know, our partners in City Hall, you know, and also businesses. So, definitely committed to doing that, and I also have experience in doing that. So, I'll just take law enforcement, for example. Prior to coming to Rochester, you know, I lived in Lacrosse and worked very closely with our law enforcement in terms of even hate crimes to make sure that there was a stronger relationship there and building trust with minority communities. So, everywhere I go and every different, and basically everywhere I go and every company, you know, I make sure that we actually work together, and so, and that's really key in terms of leadership. So, I'm definitely committed to doing that. That's my style, and also, we need to involve our community, so.
Thank you. The next question goes first to candidate Allebade, and it's from the League of Women Voters. The lack of small houses, townhouses, and apartments has been an issue for our workforce for many years. What is the county's responsibility, and what do you propose to do to help with this problem?
No, appreciate it. So, this is talking about affordable housing, and, I mean, we're in a rut. You know, I spent a lot of time in my graduate studies just to try to understand, you know, affordable housing and how can we solve it. Rochester, which is part of Olmsted County, three years ago was second to the worst in the nation, you know, and basically, you know, that's not acceptable. You know, there are a lot of factors, you know, including DMC, but in terms of us solving this, we have to look at, you know, land, finances, raw materials, our regulatory environment, you know, and because if we are able to control those, that is going to have an effect on, you know, the supply and the demand. So, things that we can do is, we can look at bonds, we can look at tax breaks and incentives, we can look at even zoning and development, and also collaborating with businesses, and revitalizing our neighborhoods. You know, if there are opportunities for us to take property, you know, and actually make it more affordable, we should do that. So, this is an initiative near and dear to my heart. We have a lot of people that can't afford this, so we need, it's a duty for us to make sure that we collaborate with our partners and do everything we can to make sure that homes in Olmsted County are affordable.
Candidate Tyne.
It's kind of a complicated question because a lot of the, a lot of those... It's kind of a complicated question, because a lot of the, a lot of those issues that are stopping affordable housing or small houses like you brought up are city issues. You know, Olmsted County doesn't control what happens with the city building code. I would favor that we would allow secondary houses on primary lots, so you could build a mother-in-law house in the backyard, that type of things to allow people to live in their community, and that would open up their primary houses for sale in Rochester. So right now, we have an aging community that's aging in place, which is great, but there's a lot of houses that are four-bedroom houses with one or two people in them, and there's not anything to replace it. So if we could find a way to get people to live in houses that they want to live in affordably, that would open up their existing houses for the market, which would help greatly, I think.
Thank you. The next question comes from Randy Peterson of the Post Bulletin for candidate Tyne.
The county sheriff is an elected official who oversees his department. Is there a role for the county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in how that department operates? And if so, what changes would you like to see made?
Well, I can't think of any changes off the top of my head, because I think Sheriff Torgerson runs a tight department. Now, if we were in a county that had poor leadership in our sheriff's department, then I think I would take a more active role. But I don't believe it's the county board's role to micromanage the county sheriff and his deputies, as long as they're doing their job. And I believe Olmsted County is served well by Sheriff Torgerson.
Candidate Allegra Day.
So there are several things that, first of all, can you say the question again?
Sure.
So I totally got it.
The county sheriff is an elected official who oversees his department. Is there a role for the county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in how the department operates? And if so, what changes would you like to see made?
Yeah, I think there is opportunities for collaboration with our sheriff's department. I, you know, I come from a family of law enforcement. My grandmother was a second female police officer in Niger. I have uncles that have been, that have served in the Navy, Army, or Force. So I value a lot of the work that law enforcement do. We also have opportunities, and there's not a lot of trust with minority communities and law enforcement, as just a fact. And I think when you look at Olmsted County, yes, the county commissioners don't control the sheriff, but they do control the budgets. And I think that working collaboratively, you know, there's some things that I'd like to see changed. For one would be chokeholds. You know, what can we do to actually make sure that we get that out? How do we ensure that we increase more investments in community policing? So those are some of the things that I think we can do. And my goal is really this. How do we foster more trust? And I think that makes our officers and deputies safe. I think it also makes all of our community members safe, and I would be actively engaged in those conversations.
Thank you. The next question comes from Sam Gill of the Chamber of Commerce for candidate Allegra Day.
As a member of the county commission, how will you prioritize local transportation projects? What steps will you take to help mitigate the disruption these projects will cause on local businesses and residents?
Yeah, so the first step is really listening to our community members, you know, and doing our due diligence. You know, even from an affordable housing perspective, you know, the role of transportation is really key. So I think we need to make sure that we work closely with our businesses and try to minimize and mitigate those risks. You know, you look at downtown Rochester, and you know, you hear of some businesses that have closed, like The Loop, I love eating there, and you know, it's a shame that you're no longer there. Now, obviously, that's the city and not the county, but are there things that we can do as a county to make sure that we're actually engaging our businesses, whether it's in Rollo, Orinoco, or Farmington, just talking to folks? So I think that would be the approach. And once we have a good consensus, you know, then we can actually move forward. So that's, you know, an approach that I would take. But it starts with communication and listening, and then action.
Candidate Tyne.
Okay, once again, I don't want to shirk the question, but this is really a city issue for the most part. The city controls busing, city controls the circulator line. The county's own transportation is building county roads so they can bring people into town and goods out of town, although I do think the county could play a bigger role in a regional perspective to try to get more regional busing more frequently so that we're not bringing nurses in from Stuartville and doctors in from Byron, that they can catch a bus at a reasonable time on a regular schedule, get into town, and then it would help our traffic downtown for the residents and the visitors. So I think we need to do a better job with that.
Thank you. The next question comes from the public. It goes to candidate Tyne first. The pandemic has revealed how many Olmsted County citizens are living paycheck to paycheck. This means that the loss of a job takes away all income and health care for these families. Is there a role for the county board in addressing this problem?
I mean, that is, that is the primary role of a county, is basically be an arm of the state and help people that are in need. Olmsted County spends about 38% of our budget on health and human services for helping people that are vulnerable and in need. So a big part of that is housing, trying to keep people in housing so they don't lose it, and we're not increasing our homeless population. So yes, we need to, we need to play a role, we are playing a role, and that's a primary role of the county. I think we're doing a good job, but it's definitely stressful during these times.
Candidate Allegra Day.
A question, please.
The pandemic has revealed how many Olmsted County citizens are living paycheck to paycheck. This means that the loss of a job takes away all income and health care for these families. Is there a role for the county board in addressing this problem?
Yes, so, you know, I think that our, you know, when you look at the key role for the county, as Mr. Tyne said, it's really making sure that you have those key social programs, you know, you're basically an arm of the state. And I'd like to see increased access to public health services, you know, in social services program. That's why that's number one in my priority. When we look at, you know, families, and some of the families I've talked to, you know, they talk about just opportunities for county efficiency in terms of, hey, you know, my kid with disability is not able to get the mandated services, you know? And I know some of that, too, because, I mean, I have a, we have someone in our family that has a disability, and, you know, there are a lot of opportunities for county efficiencies there. And if you're not making the right call, sometime it doesn't happen. So I think we have, in terms of increase in efficiency, we can definitely do that. And I think that would provide more help to the county. Now, what other counties have done is, I mean, for example, they have like a project management office, which is really an arm to really execute key projects. And I'd like to see our county implement something like that.
Thank you. The next question is from the League of Women Voters. The Zumbro Valley Medical Society has called for the county board to pass a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. If the county board adopts such a resolution, what actions should the county take?
For me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that the county should declare racism a public health crisis, because it is, and it's a fact. The data shows that's the case. In terms of specific actions that a county should take, you know, I know that there is the One Olmsted that has been rolled out. I'd like to see something stronger, a diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan. And that essentially lets us know what are we trying to tackle? And that gives us a whole plan that the whole community can actually see. So I think by having a strong DEI strategic plan, that is going to ensure that we have more projects that can actually tackle the issue. So, but it's not enough to just declare that, yes, racism is a public health crisis. What are we going to do after that? And that's where the diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan comes into place.
Candidate Tyne.
I concur. I mean, I agree that racism is a public health issue, and I would add that being racist is a sign of mental illness. I was on the Human Rights Commission when we brought forward the One Olmsted Plan to the county board, and I'm proud that we passed it. And I think, I agree that it's just a starting point. It's not, it's not the end of the road to declare that we're One Olmsted, and we will not put up with racism, or sexism, or any other bigotry or discrimination. And we need to continue to strive to make sure that Olmsted County is safe and fair and equitable for all.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I have a, not a rebuttal, but Mr. Tyne talked about racism as like a mental issue, or?
Being racist is a sign of mental illness.
Yeah, and I don't know if being a racist is a sign of mental illness, because I've, you know, met several racists that look, you know, like they have it together. So I think that it's really people not trusting one another and having hatred, you know? And I think that what the county can do, and even the city, is really to make sure that we foster that environment where there is trust and collaboration.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Tyne, and it is from Randy Peterson.
Mental health, housing, and transportation infrastructure are just some of the issues that face the county board on a regular basis. If the county had the opportunity to apply for funding that could significantly address one of these three issues, which would you seek to fund?
Housing. If you don't have a roof over your head at night, you're going to have trouble in every aspect of your life. So I believe that's the number one concern for the county, is we need to make sure that people have adequate housing, and then we'll take care of the rest when we can. But if you have money available, we're happy to take it.
Candidate Allegra Day.
Oh, please, can you repeat it again?
Mental health, housing, and transportation infrastructure are just some of the issues that face the county board on a regular basis. If the county had the opportunity to apply for funding that could significantly help address one of these three issues, which would you seek to fund?
Yeah, absolutely. It would be affordable housing. It's so crucial, you know? It affects our businesses, people, and so that would be, I concur, that's what I would do. I mean, the fact that Rochester, which is part of Olmsted, was the second to the worst in the housing, health of housing market three years ago, I mean, that's really bad. And yes, you know, there has been some strides that's being made, but we still have a lot of work to do. So absolutely, we need to focus on affordable housing. We owe it to our constituents.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Allegra Day, and it is from the general population. As a member of the county board, which funds mental health services for the schools, how would you address the rise in mental health illnesses and death by suicide seen in youth today?
Yeah, that is how I would address it, is increase funding. I mean, it's, our kids go through a lot, you know? There's a lot of pressures in school. And then you look at, you know, where we are in terms of society, in terms of just people not having a safe space. And then on top of that, you have COVID. And so this is really a period where, you know, our most vulnerable, our youths, you know, are at risk. So we need to do everything we can. And so I would be in favor of increasing, you know, significant investments in that area. Obviously, we need to look at other priorities, but I think we need to take care of our children.
Candidate Tyne.
Yeah, I don't really have any disagreement with that answer. I mean, it's a tragedy, and I'm no expert in mental health with our youth, but if there's anything we can do, that should be very high on our priority list. It's, like I said, it's a tragedy, so.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Tyne from the League of Women Voters. What is your position on hiring outside consultants?
Well, I don't, I don't like it. I wish we had experts all across the county on every issue, but there are times when you have to admit that you're not the smartest person around at a specific subject. So instead of, instead of being afraid to swallow your pride, you hire somebody who is smart at this thing and can help advise you to make smart decisions. So in the long term, I think there are times it's the smart thing to do.
Candidate Allegra Day.
Yeah, so we're going to have to leverage outside consultants at some point in time. I mean, it's just a fact, it happens in business. But what I'd like to see is, you know, for Olmsted County, I look at, you know, how can we increase more efficiency? You know, and, you know, I'm a product management expert, strategic management, and what some other counties have done, like in Fairfax, Virginia, is they have a dedicated product management office. And what that does is, if you have, you have a team of skilled people that can actually make sure that we actually ensure products are successful, you know, making sure your products are done on time, on scope, you know, and on budget. Now, regardless of whatever, if we have to include our consultants, the product managers are actually beholden to the public, you know, and the county commissioners. So there is, there is a trust factor there. The other thing is really this, you know, for example, if I said a lie or did something illegal, I could be disbarred. So we can actually have PMs, product managers, that can actually ensure that our products are successful. It's really great for our community. We make sure that, you know, we don't waste tax dollars. And also, they could be disbarred if they did something unethical. So I think that's a way that we could ensure just more efficiency.
Thank you. Another question from the general public. How do you plan to address budget shortfalls that have occurred due to the coronavirus-19?
Yeah, that's a tough one. We have to be creative, you know? And I think that we need to work with our partners in the city, you know, work with businesses, you know? If there are opportunities where we can collaborate on key strategic initiatives, you know, pull in resources together, you know, I think those are all the things that we need to do. We can also advocate more for the state, and I know that's a tough one with COVID, but we need to do everything we can. You know, you look at, you know, the equation of, you know, revenue minus expenses equals profit, you know? Revenue is not coming in, and we need to be really creative. The other thing that we can do is look at, do we have the ability to attract businesses from the outside? You know, and, you know, what will be key there is making sure that whatever businesses come to Olmsted County, that they create local jobs, so we retain jobs. And also, we need to make sure that, are those jobs, do they complement, you know, Rollo, Orinoco, Farmington, Pine Island? We want to make sure that whatever jobs are created by those companies that we attract, that it actually helps us in the long term. But it's, but it's a difficult issue.
Candidate Tyne.
Can you repeat that one more time?
How do you plan to address budget shortfalls that have occurred due to coronavirus-19?
Well, we are going to have budget shortfalls coming up, and just like our household budgets, it's, you're going to have to separate needs from wants. And the county has a lot of needs. People need our services, and we're going to have to continue to provide that. But there are things that we do that are wants, and they're great, people love them. But during tough times, we're going to have to curtail those, hold those off until we can recover as a community, and then we can bring them up to the forefront again. But needs versus want for now.
Thank you. Next question comes from the League of Women Voters. How can Olmsted County achieve a sustainable, energy-efficient future?
Well, we're moving our fleet of vehicles over to electric vehicles as they, as they come up for replacement, so that's, that's one thing we can do. We haven't had a whole lot of new buildings built, but most of those, like the example out there at the campus, our newest building is very energy-efficient, so we strive to do that. I don't know that we have to build everything to the highest LEED certification, because there's times where you're doing that for pride, and you're not, the payback is so many decades down the road that you may never see it. But we're pretty smart about our building, and I think we'll continue to be that way.
Candidate Allegra Day.
What question, please?
Yes, the question is, how can Olmsted County achieve a sustainable, energy-efficient future?
So I think that we need to, we've done some great progress, but there's a lot that we can do. So, for example, and I'll just, you know, like, three weeks ago, I believe it was three weeks ago, I was talking to a farmer in Orinoco. He had a lot of concerns, among which was really, okay, what are we going to do about solar energy? How are we going to leverage that? So I think we need to really explore opportunities where we can provide just the right environment for us to take advantage of renewable energy. We can also learn from our neighbors. So, for example, in La Crosse, Gunderson Lutheran, they're 100% energy-efficient, got a lot of high ratings, you know? And one of my friends actually runs the facilities there, you know? So we have opportunities where we can actually learn from others and take that talent to make sure that we can actually ensure that our county is more energy-efficient. So those are the type of things that I would focus on. But I think long-term, it's also, it's beneficial for business, too, because then we keep, make sure that our environment is safe, and that can also attract newer companies. But it's, it's really key. really key.
I just want to throw in, and it's not really a rebuttal, but an example of what Wally's talking about is recent, about three years ago, we had a property that was tax forfeited to us, and the previous owner had basically used it as a dump, and it had over 100,000 tires on it, and so he cashed the profit from that, and he turned it over to us, and now we're turning it into a solar farm.
Thank you. The next question comes from Randy Peterson.
Is the county playing a large enough role related to the DMC initiative? I believe that's.
Candidate Tyne.
Well, we have a permanent seat on that board. I know that my colleagues on the county board would all like to help make decisions on DMC too, but I think there is such a thing as having too many strong opinions on the board, and then we do nothing but bicker and nothing moves forward. I think our role is fine, having a permanent role, the city having a permanent role, the EDA having a permanent role, I think we're adequately balanced right now.
Candidate Legba Day.
Question, please.
Is the county playing a large enough role related to the DMC initiative?
Uh, I don't think so, and I don't know if it's a county issue or a city issue or even DMC, but we do know that, first of all, the vision, I believe in the vision of DMC. I think it's a right thing to do, it's going to provide a lot of great opportunities for our county and our city and our people. You know, affordable housing, when I did my graduate studies, you know, there's some aspects of DMC that has actually caused this crisis, so I think, you know, as the county is a key stakeholder, we just need to really actively, and everybody's doing it right then, you know, we just need to actively push for more concerted effort. The other thing that we can do is, when you look at DMC in terms of just minority jobs, you know, the numbers are very appalling, you know, and I know that there is commitment to improve things there, but there's, you know, those kinds of things, we can actually just advocate more to make sure that, you know, DMC works for everybody.
Thank you. The next question is from Sam Gill for candidate Legba Day.
As a lead on public health during the COVID-19 pandemic, Olmsted County has a significant responsibility to work with local entities to keep people safe and educated. What steps will you take to continue this community outreach and education? What are the critical elements to keep our economy open and the dials turned in the right direction?
Yeah, it's really this, guys, you got to wear your masks, you know, and it's, you know, Mr. Tyne and I, we're social distancing, and I take this really seriously because this saves lives, you know, and I work in Mayo Clinic, Director Strategy Management Services at the labs. The data is there, there's no compromise on the data, you know, this saves lives, so please wear your mask, please wash your hands. We're going to get through this, but, you know, this is affecting our kids, this is affecting our parents, and so we need us, I think, from a county perspective, we need to ensure that we model good behavior. We also need to ensure that we do more public service announcements about, you know, why masks work, you know, and why washing your hands. So it's really just more on the PR side, but I think this is too critical for us not to do because we just can't afford people dying, and this is just crazy. So absolutely, we need to do a lot more.
Thank you. Candidate Tyne.
I think our public health department is doing a fantastic job educating the people on dealing with this COVID-19 pandemic. I concur, I wear a mask, it's not popular in some communities that I mingle in, and I'm pretty loud about it, and that's not popular either, but I think our public health director is an epidemiologist, he's an expert on this, he's very outgoing, we have a website that's very current. I'm disappointed with some of the latest moves by the MDH as compared to what we're doing in the local level, so I'm proud of what we're doing to keep the public educated and go in the right direction.
Thank you. The next question from the public is a little bit long, so listen carefully. In early 2021, after the census is complete, the county and other local units must redistrict. Currently, three of the seven Olmsted County districts have citizens who live outside of the city of Rochester. The city contains 70 to 80% of the county's population. Should the county's redistricting effort result in more county districts totally contained within the city of Rochester? And you get to go first, candidate.
Sure. I understand this issue, I could probably guess who even sent it in. I don't think that we need to redistrict based on that premise. If you look at our current districts, only one of our districts, Matt Flynn's district, is completely rural. District seven is about 50/50 split. The district that Regina and Jim Beer are running for is two-thirds city, one-third rural, so essentially, there is only one district that is currently assured to be a rural representative. Two districts that are a toss-up are worse, and the other four districts are completely city, and there's more to a county than people. There are perspectives, and there are land, there's land that the county has to understand. And if we had just had one rural county commissioner, it would essentially be Rochester County, and I don't think that's fair to anybody.
Candidate Legba Day.
Yeah, from what I understand about redistricting, I support it, so that would be my answer.
Okay. The next question from the League of Women Voters goes to candidate Legba Day first. Do you favor the current Graham Park master plan?
So I'm not familiar with the details of the Graham Plan, Master Plan. I suspect is that the Seneca, okay, good, so I think, and I'd have to look at it in detail, but what, an approach that I would take is, you know, are we involved in our community in that conversation? And the long term, it needs to be this, is whatever we're doing is going to provide more value, and looking at, we also need to look at the risks. So not familiar with all the details there, but I think that on paper, at least from what I've heard, it could be reasonable, but I'd need to spend more time understanding the details.
Candidate Tyne.
I oppose, I like the great picture of it, that we're going to have a huge center that can be a multipurpose center and improve a lot of the buildings that are out there. I oppose the Seneca purchase, I don't think that was a smart decision by the county board, I was loud in opposing it, it was a five to two vote. I wish I could turn back time and keep arguing on it, but we are where we are right now, so we're going to have to figure out how to incorporate that into our plan in a smart way because we own property right now.
And before we turn to the final closing arguments, I'm going to let the public have the last, it's sort of a global question for candidate Tyne. What are the county's chief strengths and weaknesses?
Well, we're comparatively prosperous and well-educated county. I mean, we have a lot of good-paying jobs, we have a lot of smart people here, so that's probably our strength. Our weakness, I mean, our weakness is, I mean, we've got a lot of weaknesses, but there's nothing glaring that I would point out as something that we need to change. We could maybe become, I don't know how you say, we would benefit from becoming a more ethnically diverse county. I mean, we're predominantly white, and I think we'd be a more interesting and inclusive county if we had more diversity, but that's probably our weakness, is that we're more homogenous.
Candidate Legba Day.
Oh, please, question again.
What are the county's chief strengths and weaknesses?
Yeah, so the strengths for the county are people and organizations. I mean, we have very caring and hard-working people here, and we have some of the best organizations in the world, you know, if not the best. So our people and organizations, and we're very innovative. In terms of weaknesses, you know, yes, we're working a lot, but we have a lot of weaknesses. You know, as Mr. Tyne said, diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's a weakness, and that's why it's on my strategic plan, or it's on my priority. Affordable housing, second to the worst in the nation three years ago, that's a weakness, we need to take care of that. We need to increase access to our public health services. We're doing a good job, but a lot, it's not reaching all families, so we needed to work on that too. So those are some of our weaknesses, but again, I'm very optimistic, you know, that we can pull through together. We need to be focused and just keep our eyes on the prize. And then law enforcement, I mean, that's a, it's a strength and a weakness. Trust, you know, there's no trust with minority communities, you know, so that's a weakness, and we need to be, we need to be, we need to work hard on that and provide a lot more transparency.
Thank you. This ends the question portion of this evening's candidates forum. We now turn to closing statements, and closing statements are two minutes, and to speak first is candidate Legba Day.
Now, thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and everyone in our community for watching. I'd also like to thank Mr. Tyne for attending and having a great cordial conversation for the betterment of our community. Olmsted County and District Seven, which comprises of Rochester, Orinoco, New Haven, Farmington, Cascade, Haverhill, Marion, and Pine Island, are hard-working and caring. We also boast of some of the most innovative organizations in the world, but our county does not work for everyone. We have public health issues, health disparities, COVID economic issues, and an affordable housing crisis which took Rochester to the second worst rank in the nation three years ago. We also have lack of trust between law enforcement and minority communities, diversity and equity issues, some county officials' issues, and lots of room for improvement when it comes to community engagement. I am a strong leader with over 20 years of proven results. Prior to coming to Rochester, I worked with law enforcement and built and trusted minority communities. I've also led large teams and projects for the largest home furniture manufacturer in the world and the number one hospital. I get things done, and will do the same for Olmsted County with collaboration. My motivation always comes down to service. Where can I put my skills for the use for, where can I put my skills for the betterment of everyone? I strongly believe we are best when we are one community working together. My goal is to make sure that Olmsted County is a great place for everyone to live and work. I serve you and not the other way around. This election also provides a great opportunity in our county. We have an opportunity to vote for someone who is highly qualified and also brings a diverse and fresh perspective that will help us respond better to growth and change. I humbly ask for your vote, and you can learn more about my campaign at walemn.com, and that is W-A-L-E-M-N dot com.
Thank you. Candidate Tyne.
I'd like to thank Wally for running for office, I think he's a fine candidate, and I think it's important that people have choices on their ballots. When choosing who should represent you as county commissioner, I think there are many factors to consider. Number one is experience, is the candidate up to the task? When I entered this position in 2016, I had 17 years of experience as township supervisor and chairman under my belt. Despite this, I had much to learn. Olmsted County is a massive organization. The county touches your lives from the moment we register your birth certificate until the fateful day that we record your death certificate. In between, we work to protect you through our public health department, help you in times of need through our health, housing, and human services department and our HRA, provide you with safe roads to travel upon through our public works department, protect our environment through our environmental health and soil and water conservation district departments, plus our waste or energy facility. We ensure proper land use through our planning department, provide fair elections and collect taxes through our property records and licensing department. We protect you from crime through our sheriff's department and the adult detention center. We prosecute those who have harmed you through our county attorney's office and the space we provide for our judges. We provide recreation through our parks department and facilitate over 800 employees and 1,100 contract workers through our human resources, IT, and administrative departments. Our budget for 2020 is over $263 million, 107 million of which is collected through property taxes. During my first four years as county commissioner, I've worked hard to be a voice of common sense on our board. I have strived to make sure that we are making logical, long-term decisions that benefit our citizens. I do not take this job lightly. In fact, during my first four years in office, I have 100% attendance record, having missed zero county board meetings during my first term. I am not a partisan person, I work hard to develop strong relationships with my colleagues and the citizens I serve. I pledge to do the same if you reelect me. Thank you.
Thank you for your closing comments, candidates, and thank you to our viewing audience. I would like to thank you to the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind everyone that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 3, and early voting has already started. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit minvotes.org, that's M-N-V-O-T-E-S dot org, for more information on the process. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place, or you would like to see your sample ballot, visit vote411.org, that's V-O-T-E-411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums, any other forums, from the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everybody.